It's not a huge. It's. 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 It's.
What are they getting them this way to?
They always say. They just think.
Yeah. Look at ours.
What they want to do.
Yesterday, I mean, played around the house and then they went to park. If you're down. Down for a man. Yes. She came home with us. And I'm glad for that. That's why they're good. That's why you get a little chill. Yeah. Yeah. Residential. Yeah. They make the right.
This is this is. That's heavier.
They don't make players. They're not. They're. 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 They're doing the.
I have a presentation. Happy holiday always out there like we're down to the.
No, thank you.
No, no, I'm not sure. I'm saying the other one's too.
Man, I'm. 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 This time. They're probably. The. We're. We're. Expect. We're. Starting. We're. 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 Five girls. Three. We got a. 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 We got a.
What's the way on there?
I don't know. The city.
Turned feet to. You're a kid. You don't know.
Yes. Very.
Yeah, he got murdered.
I see. Does that mean it's a girl? Does that mean it's a girl?
Yes. I seen that.
I didn't know what that was.
And then I was talking. When the. Leon.
No. Good job.
They had a. Just. And they had a. In the middle.
And then he had his. Her.
Yeah, she's way down.
Sure did. No. You're. You're. You're.
He's on that. He's on that second tier. He's upstairs. He's on that.
I have no idea. I'm.
It's five thirty and we will call together the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission to order. Would you rise with me please and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Ron Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Keith Buckles.
Here.
Pam McNew.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams.
Here.
Do I hear an approval of the minutes for the September twelve meeting?
So moved.
Got a move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Plan agenda items. A road closure request applicant Stephanie Ehrman. Tax map zero one six C parcel zero twenty four point zero zero located silo drive R one suburban residential district district six. Is Miss Ehrman here?
I don't think that gonna be there.
I don't know that it's necessary for them to be here. It's for closure. As you can see, there's some unimproved that connected to two subdivisions. The Iowa department was good with closure. So if y'all are.
And they contacted all four of the residents that are involved in it.
I think that's what I understand. Maybe one that that happened in, but I believe everybody out there is on board with it.
What happens Jim in the event of those closures? Does this property lines move in and they?
Yeah, well. They're.
Split it half. Split it halfway.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Any discussion on it? All in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
So be it. C subdivision flat for forty-four lots.
Oh, that's.
B's been removed.
Oh, right. On yours mind, but.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
C subdivision flat for forty-four lots applicant Michael Gaddis. Tax map zero thirty-six parcel zero twenty-four point zero zero, zero six seven point zero zero and zero six eight point zero zero and zero six nine point zero zero. Located in Franceville A one slash F one agriculture forestry district district three approximately ninety-three and a half acres. Mr. Gaddis.
Yes, sir. What kind of after forty, sir?
Come up and tell us what your what your plans are.
It's a it's a lakefront property and so what I'm gonna do is have a community type docks and then all the lakefront will be separate from the lots. And I'll have like seven acres that people will be able to use instead of having lakefronts come a hundred foot or fifty foot. They'll have the whole entire predigent they can use picnic areas and stuff. And and then the lot will be I think range from one point three acres. And so pretty much be a private, private gated subdivision. That's good.
Any questions from the board?
Jim?
So Phil's been reviewing this and some of the things that had reached out to the engineers to try to address is there's some road grade issues from the entry. Of course, this is stuff B Z A will have to hear. Our meetings are kind of reversed. So I have to go to B Z A next month. Might as well present this to you all that way you can answer if you have any other additional concerns. I think at the entry and at the rear of the subdivision, the there's a twelve percent at the entry and what was it like thirteen and a half along the back side of the watch? You can see some of those lots are a little steep. We'd also, of course, they're not showing any detention for this development. They're showing everything to run across. So that's something we're going to discuss with the engineers as far as, you know, where the run of this to make sure it's not crossing additional lots. There are some lots on the lower side between the lake and the subdivision to make sure it's not crossing those. And if we need drainage easements in locations to fish on with that where the houses are. And then Phil also questioned some of the lots. You can see where the power lines run through and cut off, just making sure that they were going to result in a buildable lot. Just having them lay out, you know, they can show us, you know, an area on a flat that says, yeah, this is buildable. So we're not creating lots that aren't buildable. He hasn't heard back from those. Engineers on that. Everything else is pretty well in order. We do have variances that can be required for road grade. And and if those were approved, then they would make any recent middle there. The detention, of course, if they don't need it, they don't need it. Base off runoff, that is something we can get an answer to. So I don't know that until we get the if y'all have any other concerns, maybe address that now. The way our meetings are set up, until next month, we're not going to know that those variances are obtained. So I don't know if we approve it pending those being granted, you know, it's going to hold him up a couple of months if we do it in a quarter. If we. If you have concerns with drainage, we can table it until that is resolved and put it on planning permission for next month along with the B Z A variances. Or if you have any other concerns, we can address that.
Is there public water? Is there public water?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not.
What about sewers?
No. I do know from talking to the engineer yesterday on the question about the setback from the power lines.
Yeah.
There was plenty of room for that.
Okay.
And and then on the drainage, they said that, you know, when you're at the lake, the lake is pretty much is what catches the water from all the subdivisions they've ever been in.
Yeah, and and I don't know that there's need for detention. The only things that we haven't been able to talk to them about, if you look on the upper left hand corner, you see the lots and there's lots across the private road there. And some of our catch basins collect right here as that enters and and it goes down this swells. Well, how are we going from there into the lake across, you know, without crossing those adjacent parcels and property owners? That's just the questions I was hoping to get addressed.
Is it curb and gutter and drainage or just?
They are curb and gutter streets and and.
Curbs.
Gutters and then just discharging out head walls. Once it collects, it'll discharge out head walls and down the natural contour of the properties.
So those are going wherever it discharges is going to require an easement from there to the lake.
Right, and that's the other thing, you know, whether we need to show drainage easements across the lots to make sure everyone knows this is a drainage easement. We can't build in here. And then again, addressing the front side to make sure the hats get into the lake, that we have proper infrastructure in place to get it to the water. I don't know if there's already existing drainage across that area, you know, tiles or whatever's in place. How are we getting it to there? It's just pretty simple questions to answer, but we just need to speak to them in regards to that.
The roads, the main road pretty much was cut in about three years ago and the drainage was put in at the time. And we pretty much just followed the topo of the land, you know, where it had where it runs off. That property has a lot of hills and valleys, so the drainage ways are pretty much nature's valleys. And about everything is drained just like it did before we put the roof in. And over where the property owners across the road are at, that that drains more towards my house. And back in the day, Doc Alexander, when he developed, well, he soaked off about all those lots on that side. About all those lots came off of this property at one time over the years. And and he put in a swell to keep the water coming around and then goes down in the lake between me and the Mr. and Mrs. Womper. Which pretty much, you know, there's not at the bend and shouldn't be any more drainage.
Is that Doc Alex place that Holland right there?
That's that's Doc Alexander's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's where. Steve Hurst.
He's on that side of the lake.
Right. But who bought Doc Alex's house in Elam? Elam lived out there on the point. You live.
Oh, yeah, Elam, yeah.
You live in Doc Alex's house?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you was you the one that's gonna build the dock?
That's right, yeah.
And you never did the.
Well, the docks are gonna be for the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if you go be building houses on all these lots right here, is that not going to change the lay of the land, the flow of the water?
Well, you'll have some, you know, runoff from the houses, but down like I said, down at the road where where Alexander Road is, the private road, everything naturally just drains around and goes back either back towards the ditch and the pipe that goes under Alexander, comes in the back of the code there at Antioch. Or it goes around, comes by my house and and Doc Alexander's original house years ago that Mr. and Mrs. Womper lived in. And that's where he put a big swell back in the day that carries any water running that way over between us and then out at the old boat dock.
I think the main runoff is just going to be where we put the road in, we put our curbs and gutters and we're collecting that water. I think the vast majority of the property through drainage easements will go to the lake. Again, the the primary area, if I'm not mistaken, there's catch basins right in here. And you can see the topo appeared to take it in this direction. It doesn't go over here. So this is the area that, you know, just wanted to verify that we have infrastructure in place to get that to the water.
Yeah, or it's.
On the road, not for the development of the lots.
Or it's not going through some of the new lots. I mean, I know you're worried about the existing lots, but you've got a lot of new lots there that you don't know whether there's needs to be easement on or not. I know you've got five feet on each side of an interior property line, but that may not be enough. So I'm I'm concerned that drainage is not been you've not been able to get a hold of them and.
Yeah, and and it's just a matter of them looking at what they have. They have their calculations that show and they can look and and show us that easement on the flat the way the waters want to flow while through that. And if it needs to be shown on the flat, they can put that on there and and show us that there are easements for it to get through there, which is simple enough to do.
Mr. Waller, too, on that that area right there, it starts out out at Antioch Church and it goes up in a in a pretty good grade. I think like Jim was saying, I think about twelve degrees right there at that first beginning. And it kind of goes up and levels off. And when you have the curb and gutter and everything, it should all come right back towards Antioch and then into the ditch and then go into the culvert that goes under Alexander Road now. Because that's kind of that's why it's draining now without curb and gutter that I put in, you know, three years ago.
Well, true. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We did put a bigger culvert in. Billy come out a couple of years ago and I put in further culvert. So comedy, if you're runoff.
Yeah, I think for the most part, everything as far as the layout and stuff, as long as the lots are buildable, I think we're fine with that. I do would prefer the engineers to contact us, let us know, here's our drainage easements to to discharge this water across these lots. We can identify to make sure people ain't building in that or we're fighting this down the road somewhere ten years later when somebody buys a lot. We're going to do this at the road and then making sure there's no concerns with the B Z A. Again, most of B Z A sits on this board and if y'all have concerns with the thirteen and a half percent grade increase on the back, we want to make sure that's not going to be an issue. Because it would be good to be able to get him set up for approval for the flat with these variances in place prior to waiting two more months to to approve that flat for the variances.
Well, the variances would be for the two road grade variances.
That they'd be for road grade variances and no sidewalks.
What's Billy say? Has Billy looked at it?
Thirteen percent in the back half, he didn't have an issue with that. I think it's thirteen and a half, thirteen point six.
How long is it? How long is a thirteen and a half percent?
That's probably it's from that main power line up to the top. I'd say you're talking six to seven hundred feet maybe to measure.
You you did say these are going to be y'all have no intentions of accepting that having these accepted into the county road system?
Well, you know, it's going to be private. It'll be it'll be of course to county specs, but it will be a private. Property ownership portion plays a key so that in the future there will be money.
I put my little pet pig in there too that's just dead end cold sacks longer. We need to either take that out of our subdivision regs or.
I agree.
Do something with it.
I agree. And and talking with Mr. Pickle on some of the road slopes, you know, he's he doesn't have that big an issue with them because he says, you know, when they're not going to come in there during snows and stuff, they're not going to have the subdivisions to try to maintain those. So he didn't really have an issue with that. Again, if the planning commission would like to give us opportunity, because we do have to go to B Z A next month for these variances, we can have it updated to show drainage easements, make sure that we have those items addressed so it can be approved subject to the variances granted by the B Z A.
Well, is it going to help him? Would it be better to table this tonight and then have that for next month and then have it on the planning first and then the B Z A? Because it it's not going to be any different.
That is correct. We can table it tonight, have these items addressed, make sure we're all good with it, then we could approve the flat subject to. And if the B Z A is good with those road grades and no sidewalk, which again, in a subdivision larger than this, I don't think sidewalks are an issue. So I think we're gonna address it all next month. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to table it for next month.
Second.
Move in a second to table. Any discussion? All in favor of tailoring signify the same aye.
Aye.
We'll see you next month. D subdivision flat for three lots applicant property owner Rochelle Thomas tax map zero twenty-two parcel zero eighty-one point zero zero, zero eighty-two point zero zero and zero eighty-three point zero zero. Located nine seventy-seven Spears Road A two rural subdivision suburban district district six approximately three point eighty-seven acres. Ms. Thomas, Mr. Thomas.
I'm James Hare. Okay. This was a family property, all three tracks eighty-one, eighty-two and eighty-three. The family deceased and the homeowner of eighty-three built a garage on the eighty-one parcel. And since then, the husband of the parcel eighty-three has deceased and the homeowner, which is now in control of all three tracks, eighty-two being landlord, is trying to sell off the dwelling eight, which is on parcel eighty-one. The problem with that is the garage is actually for eighty-three parcel eighty-three and it has been built on that property. So we tried to do that property line around that garage to incorporate it back into parcel eighty-three. And in doing so, the parcel eighty-one does not meet current zoning on acreage. So we were trying to put an extension of fifty feet down beside eighty-three, however, it fell into the septic area. So we reduced that down to twenty-five feet wide in order to have a buildable area for parcel eighty-one in the backside of parcel eighty-three.
So then how many lots you're ending up with?
We're just gonna have two lots.
Two lots, okay.
And the eighty-two was already landlocked.
So that that one that's that one that's a flag lot, it's going to have a house at the front, at the rear?
If it's a store, that means it cannot be built back in that location. That is the purpose of putting that twenty-five foot strip.
So the idea is that at some point that would go away and there would be a buildable lot at the back.
At the very back, yes.
Why was three lots put on this?
It is actually three lots going to two lots is what it should be. They have three lots. And they're trying to create two lots out of those three.
What's your thoughts?
Based on all the hardships of this, you know, they have legal laws now that are nonconforming. I think this is a good compromise in order to allow them to subdivide the parcels, try to get the garage on the house parcel that it needs to be. Whoever buys the house that is in violation of the current regulations, if anything happens, it does give them that parcel in the rear to be able to build without causing issue of disturbance to the adjacent property septic. It's about the only option. This is the only option. Mr. Hare discussed a thousand different ways to try to do this and this is about the best option we can come up with to to resolve without tearing down the garage.
Will comply with all setbacks and everything else?
It it will, yeah. He's he's making the new law lines around the garage be the five foot off to comply with setbacks. And then the the really only issue is we're not keeping our fifty foot nondiminishing width to the rear. But then that's subjective. We have all the frontage up front. There's just no idea that they will be able to use that front parcel to rebuild. So they may need that rear area in order to build a a dwelling back if something did occur. I think it probably eliminates a larger mess and it makes it a better situation.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. You are good to go. E resolution amending the municipal and regional subdivision regulations of Loudoun County, Philadelphia and Greenback and the planning regions of Linnor City and Loudoun Appendix Two, construction methods, seasonal limits. Jim?
This is a subdivision regulation amendment under our paving criteria under seasonal limitations. It doesn't allow paving activities when the air temperature is fifty degrees and falling. We're looking to amend this to add an exception. And it's basically the developer, paving contractor, whatever would submit a cold weather paving and compaction plan. That would be based off the T dot standard for cold weather paving and compaction. They would submit that plan for review and approval by the highway department. And if the highway department approved it, they would be able to pave in accordance with that standard. Gives them a little more time, a little more leeway on paving as to temperatures cooling in the fall or starting in the in the spring. Mr. Pickle was good with this and it addresses some issues we've had trying to complete development.
This is just an instance of we're we're more stringent than the state is.
Yeah, the state has a plan for this and we are, we just say fifty degrees and falling, we can't do it. The state actually goes in and they use its temperature of the asphalt placement, the number of rollers you're using, monitoring that temperature as it.
There's a computer formula that they plug in there that says what temperature it has to be when it loses the asphalt, how long it takes to get to the site and how long it takes to put it down, how quick they roll it and stuff.
Right.
It just it it'd probably increase a few weeks of opportunity to complete development.
It came up primarily because in my district, the contractor wanted to pave last fall and we they stopped him, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's taken. Got a move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. So be it. For county commission action on planning commission recommendations, Jim?
Hello. Anything there? The actions taken by the lax commission followed in line with what we've made recommendations for.
Building activity?
I have nothing to add.
Any additional comments with the public? An update from the planning department?
Nothing to add at this time.
Do I hear and move it to adjourn?
So we.
Right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Didn't call the Loudoun County Board and zoning appeals meeting to order and roll call.
Ron Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Anybody that's going to speak during this meeting needs to stand, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may now give and the causes now pending before this commission be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so if you're God. Thank you.
Yes.
I read the minutes.
I did.
I would move that they be accepted.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Planned agenda items. Varian's request to build attached garage in front side yard applicant property owner Brian Johnson located seven thirty-one Calhoun Drive tax map.
located seven thirty-one Calhoun Drive, tax map zero seven zero L, parcel zero one three point zero zero, R one suburban residential district, District Three, approximately zero point six nine acres. Mr. Johnson here.
Tabled this last time. I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Or not? B is off, right?
Yes.
C. Special exception to live-in home that is currently on property while building a new home. Will remove trailer when home is completed. Advocate property owner Kimberly Knowles, located nineteen ninety-one Reed Springs Road, tax map zero seven six, parcel zero eight eight point zero zero, A one agriculture, four three district, District Four, approximately five acres. Kimberly.
Yes. Never done this before, so.
Just tell us what you've done.
The house that we're currently living in, we need, it's coming off foundations, it's got some mold, it's got some water damage. So we've been looking at several different options, but the only option that we can come up with is to stay on the five acres, because that was the property that Daddy bought for me and Mama. And their home, so it's just me, my twenty-seven-year-old, and I have custody of him. And so, we have found, we have found double wide, and they're wanting to do... We got a concreted driveway, and we're wanting to put it like twenty to thirty feet in front or however, but we are asking if we can keep the house and keep the double wide is finished, because we pretty much live from check to check and can't afford to stay somewhere.
Are you gonna tear the house down when you get to double wide here?
Yeah.
I was thinking something. You've got anything, Jim?
No, I mean, just do you have any timeframe?
That's what I was gonna say. We always put a timeframe. And we give you up to a year, and then we can extend it if we have to, but would a year be enough?
Do what?
Do you hope to get it done within a year?
Yes.
The double wide?
Yeah. It won't take, it won't take two to three minutes for them to, you know, they'll have to level, level out, so it'll be even because of the way the property is. And then, they said it would take two or three minutes. It's not carved in stone because of the payment wise thing, but we've got to do, I've got to do, we've got to do something, because we can't continue to stay in that house. So as soon as the double, double wide or whatever that we can get, then yeah, the house is, house is gonna be gone, because I think it was built in nineteen fifty. Daddy bought it in seventy-two for five acres of barn and a house for like ten thousand dollars. So I really don't wanna get the property up. And the way prices are right now, I've been given two hundred and ten is the most for the five acres. So I've got Eddie White on one side, and behind us is Davis's farm, and then over from his estate, I'll sell the Jacob to Leonard Grimes. And so, nobody wants to fight.
How long after you moved into your home, your new home, would it take you to get this old one tore down?
The Clayton said that as soon as this one's up, and because I'd have to have the power, you know, so as soon as the double wide is done, transfer, you know, the electric, then that one, we plan on, you know, Clayton is going to tear down the...
They're gonna tear down the old house?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody in the audience got anything? Anybody else got anything?
Make a motion to approve a year.
Yes.
Got a year, and if you got, run into trouble, come back, we'll do something else.
Thank you.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye. D. Varian's request to get approval to increase grade on road. Advocate Deborah Rossi, tax map zero five one B, parcel zero one four point zero zero, located Summit Hill Drive, A two Pudd Rule, Residential District, District Three. Ms. Rossi?
So this road that we wanna build was approved, I think in two thousand and five, but we just never built it, and now we have need to go up that distance, which is about four hundred feet. And in part of that four hundred feet, it exceeds the ten percent grade. And so we went ahead and took down one side so we could see the steepness. And a lot of it's not above it, but there is a section of maybe, I wanna say a hundred feet maybe, or a hundred and fifty feet, that exceeds the ten. Some of it's at two, some of it's at seven. So it's various, goes up a hill. And so we'd like to do that, and then at the end of it, we'll have a cul-de-sac that's about a hundred and sixty feet of cul-de-sac. And that's all I think we're ever gonna build there. The rest of it is land, and I think that's it. We're not, we're not, we're just not gonna go any further.
Couldn't see what the road grades are.
It goes to, what is it, the asphalt similar?
It's got a fourteen point six five to seven.
Fourteen point six five on that.
There's a fifteen.
On that one little section.
Is that before grade or after grade?
Final grade is fourteen six five.
Yeah. We put in most of this, I mean, we cut it so we can see what it look like and see the accessibility. And you can see it starts off, you know, it's just one section right there in the middle that picks up the grade.
Is this a public road?
It's purely private.
Private.
And maybe five people will live on that, maybe, maybe less.
So you're looking to create five lots off of this road?
So, and we have about thirteen acres left, so they'd be more than two acres apiece if you pick your property.
I believe Ms. Rossi's looking to develop this road first without creating the subdivision of the lots. She has one lot currently that doesn't need it correct.
Right.
So she's in conversations wanting to create this road now and then develop the lots at a later date.
Yeah, so the mess is over with.
But she would need this variance in order to submit her plat with her...
You talked to Billy?
Again, he was okay with it. He's not going to maintain it. He's under the impression it's a private road, they're not gonna maintain.
But you're not gonna turn it over to the county?
No.
It's gonna be a very difficult road to build. It's sixteen percent grade, fifteen percent.
Well, most of it's not. We've cut, I mean, we've cut it already, one lane, because I wanted to see what that looked like.
Yeah, but you haven't put gravel on it and tried to get a roller on it to roll the asphalt down, because it's steep. You're gonna try to pave it, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, for sure. To county, to the county's favor.
It doesn't have to meet the county's specs.
Yeah.
So it's, but it's not.
It's not, yes, sir.
The cut now is deep, where we have, we're laying back a lot of dirt.
Yeah.
So I was trying to get it to where, you know, I didn't have to cut again. If you see it, it doesn't look, if you ride on it. The man who excavated it has one leg and an artificial, I mean, artificial leg. And he walked it the other day, and he didn't have trouble walking it. So I mean, I'm sure a car, currently our development's at twelve, I think, and you have a little more of an incline for a small section. It's not most of it. It's less than half is the grade picks up.
Anybody in the audience got anything? Anybody else got anything?
It's just, it's steep, in my opinion.
I would go with the majority.
It's a, it's a steep road.
I agree it's steep, but the whole, whole thing's steep.
Yeah.
I think, I think if, if we have your word that it's gonna be a minimal development and there're gonna be large lots.
That's all I'm used to.
I will make the motion with that, with that in mind, to approve.
I'll second you.
Got a motion in a second. Anybody else got anything? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. You're approved. E. Special exception to build a butcher shop. Advocate property owner Mitchell Hyde, tax map zero eight four, parcel zero four four, located seventy-four thirty-one, Highway four eleven, M one general industrial district, District Three, approximately two acres.
Yeah, you gotta know, I'm trying to get this rezoned special exemption, so I appreciate it. Seems you, I think we better think it worked out according to what happened.
Everything's been worked out. Anybody in the audience got anything? Anybody up here got anything? I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. Anybody else got anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
I'll abstain.
Thank you, guys.
F. Varian's request for six-foot onside yard in No County Road frontage. Advocate property owner Hoyt Castile, tax map zero four zero P, parcel zero zero eight point zero one, located four fifty Hope Drive, A two Rule Residential District, District One, approximately five point four three acres.
Yes, we have an existing building that's been there probably over twenty years. And I converted it to a residence, it was a shop building. When they built it, apparently they didn't allow for the distance between the property next door. This property is fifty-nine acres of farmland. And we're kind of at the end of the road. Recorded easement that goes to the property. Recorded back in sixty-four, I think. So I'm kind of at y'all's mercy here.
Neighbor have any opposition? Does your neighbor have any opposition, the one you're six feet from?
No opposition.
What's this up here, up there? Is that a house? I don't know, I don't see the light, right there?
That's a barn.
Okay. So there's not a house on it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Shop building prior to that, and I'll be converting it to a two-bedroom house.
That down here on the lower side?
Yes.
Right down there?
Yes.
Jim?
Kaylee had issued a permit on this, stating it was replacing an existing home. Of course, there was no existing home, and he had some documents that showed, I think, Christian Meders subdivided this parcel off an adjacent track, being five foot. Of course, Mr. Meders understands our regulations require twenty-five feet of road frontage on county roads. But if we let you, you can record five acre track. It's exempt plats. So the road frontage is, you know, it is what it is, but once I went on site for an inspection, you know, it wasn't replacing existing home. It was a accessory building, which would have been compliant with setbacks for an accessory building. At this point, this gentleman has done some work to the structure to turn it into a home. And at that time, I recommended he come to this board, first of all, for the road frontage, to address the road frontage issue. And secondly, you know, when we were out there looking, I said, you know, the structure doesn't even meet the setbacks to be converted into a home. Obviously, if y'all grant the variance to the setbacks, he'll be able to continue to work to try to bring the structure into compliance as a home. I think the road frontage, obviously, he does have a right of way to the property. I think it's not as great a factor.
And he's six foot of the line now?
He's probably needing a six-foot variance, about fourteen feet.
Okay. So you want, you want twenty-five, you need twenty-five or twenty?
He needs twenty feet, and he's about fourteen, so he's about up six foot variance. You're about fourteen and a half, so six-foot variance would allow him to leave the structure.
When they built this, they kind of built it catty-cornered a little bit.
Is it all the way, or is this part of it need that?
It's probably catty-cornered, but then again, when we're on site, I couldn't tell you where the property line is. We're going to a fence that's up there, you know, pins are a long distance. I don't know that we could pinpoint.
Anybody in the audience got anything? Or Dan?
His lack of road frontage, we're preventing from subdividing it anyway.
Right.
It would, you won't be able to preserve subdivision now.
It's fifty-nine acres, right?
It's five acres.
Oh, I thought you said fifty-nine acres.
Yeah, it's a, it's a buds of fifty-nine acres.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. You're good.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else got anything? You got anything, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Somebody want to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Where's John?